Good evening and welcome, everyone. The time is now 7:01. Good evening and welcome, everyone. The time is now 7:01. Good evening and welcome, everyone. The time is now 7:01. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, September 8th, The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, September 8th, 2025 will please come to order. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, September 8th, 2025 will please come to order. 2025 will please come to order. Will the clerk please call the role? Will the clerk please call the role? Will the clerk please call the role?
Heidi Cater. Heidi Cater. Heidi Cater.
Here. Here. Here.
Sheila Pryor. Sheila Pryor. Sheila Pryor.
Here. Here. Here.
Sarah Johansson. Sarah Johansson. Sarah Johansson.
Here. Here. Here.
Paris Bendey. Paris Bendey. Paris Bendey.
Here. Here. Here.
Valentina Ayers. Valentina Ayers. Valentina Ayers.
Here. Here. Here.
Dan Janestra. Dan Janestra. Dan Janestra.
Here. Here. Here.
Millen Sahoni. Millen Sahoni. Millen Sahoni.
Present. Present. Present.
Chase Anderson. Chase Anderson. Chase Anderson.
Here. Here. Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Thank you. We have a quorum. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Thank you. We have a quorum. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone, on a beautiful, beautiful fall evening. Thank you and welcome, everyone, on a beautiful, beautiful fall evening. Thank you and welcome, everyone, on a beautiful, beautiful fall evening. I hope it stays like this through the winter. I hope it stays like this through the winter. I hope it stays like this through the winter. Okay, if you wish to speak during the audience opportunity to address the board, Okay, if you wish to speak during the audience opportunity to address the board, Okay, if you wish to speak during the audience opportunity to address the board, please fill out a form placed at the back of the room please fill out a form placed at the back of the room and hand it over to our district admin assistant, Amy, please fill out a form placed at the back of the room and hand it over to our district admin assistant, Amy, and hand it over to our district admin assistant, Amy, sitting to my right, in the far right corner there. sitting to my right, in the far right corner there. sitting to my right, in the far right corner there. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. Consent agenda items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. Consent agenda items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in the materials. The consent agenda items are listed in the materials. The consent agenda items are listed in the materials. The recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion? The recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion? The recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion?
I so move. I so move. I so move.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second. Second. Second.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please take her own call vote? Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please take her own call vote? Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please take her own call vote?
Sheila Pryor, yes. Heidi Cater. Sheila Pryor, yes. Heidi Cater. Sheila Pryor, yes. Heidi Cater.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Valentina Ayers. Valentina Ayers. Valentina Ayers.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Dan Janestra. Dan Janestra. Dan Janestra.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Sarah Johansson. Sarah Johansson. Sarah Johansson.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Paris Bendey. Paris Bendey. Paris Bendey.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Millen Sahoni. Millen Sahoni. Millen Sahoni.
Yes, we have an agenda. Thank you. Yes, we have an agenda. Thank you. Yes, we have an agenda. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is reports from organizations, and I would like to invite Rachel Lynn, All right, the next item on our agenda is reports from organizations, and I would like to invite Rachel Lynn, All right, the next item on our agenda is reports from organizations, and I would like to invite Rachel Lynn, Student Council Vice President from Wayzata High School, to please come forward. Student Council Vice President from Wayzata High School, to please come forward. Student Council Vice President from Wayzata High School, to please come forward. Congratulations, Rachel, on being elected vice president. Welcome. Congratulations, Rachel, on being elected vice president. Welcome. Congratulations, Rachel, on being elected vice president. Welcome.
Hello? Okay.
Hello? Okay.
Hello? Okay.
Good evening, Superintendent Anderson, members of the board, and everybody else gathered here tonight.
Good evening, Superintendent Anderson, members of the board, and everybody else gathered here tonight.
Good evening, Superintendent Anderson, members of the board, and everybody else gathered here tonight.
I hope you're all having a great start to your week.
I hope you're all having a great start to your week.
I hope you're all having a great start to your week. Let me start by briefly introducing myself.
Let me start by briefly introducing myself.
Let me start by briefly introducing myself.
My name is Rachel Yin, and as a student body vice president, I will be providing monthly reports
My name is Rachel Yin, and as a student body vice president, I will be providing monthly reports
My name is Rachel Yin, and as a student body vice president, I will be providing monthly reports
to the school board on the Wayzata High School experience.
to the school board on the Wayzata High School experience.
to the school board on the Wayzata High School experience. I will keep these reports brief, as I know the board has wonderful work to get to.
I will keep these reports brief, as I know the board has wonderful work to get to.
I will keep these reports brief, as I know the board has wonderful work to get to.
With the school year kicking off, our wonderful LINK crew spent the first day of school welcoming roughly
With the school year kicking off, our wonderful LINK crew spent the first day of school welcoming roughly
With the school year kicking off, our wonderful LINK crew spent the first day of school welcoming roughly
1,000 freshmen to our high school, bringing our total student enrollment count to around 4,000.
1,000 freshmen to our high school, bringing our total student enrollment count to around 4,000.
1,000 freshmen to our high school, bringing our total student enrollment count to around 4,000.
130-ish LINK leaders gave the freshmen guided tours around the high school to help them acclimate to the building.
130-ish LINK leaders gave the freshmen guided tours around the high school to help them acclimate to the building.
130-ish LINK leaders gave the freshmen guided tours around the high school to help them acclimate to the building.
With homecoming a month away, our student council is busy grappling with weighty tasks like orchestrating the school dance,
With homecoming a month away, our student council is busy grappling with weighty tasks like orchestrating the school dance,
With homecoming a month away, our student council is busy grappling with weighty tasks like orchestrating the school dance,
gathering concessions for our block party, raising donations for a tackle cancer,
gathering concessions for our block party, raising donations for a tackle cancer,
gathering concessions for our block party, raising donations for a tackle cancer,
and determining which pack of balloons give us the best value for our book, and it's always the Amazon one.
and determining which pack of balloons give us the best value for our book, and it's always the Amazon one.
and determining which pack of balloons give us the best value for our book, and it's always the Amazon one.
In addition, I am honored to announce that I will be serving as Minnesota State Representative
In addition, I am honored to announce that I will be serving as the Minnesota State Representative
In addition, I am honored to announce that I will be serving as the Minnesota State Representative
to the National Student Council, and I'm excited to bring the incredible work and advocacy that we do locally to the national stage.
to the National Student Council, and I'm excited to bring the incredible work and advocacy that we do locally to the national stage.
to the National Student Council, and I'm excited to bring the incredible work and advocacy that we do locally to the national stage.
Other organizations are in eager preparation for the year ahead as well.
Other organizations are in eager preparation for the year ahead as well.
Other organizations are in eager preparation for the year ahead as well.
Wayzata Theater has eagerly begun assembling their musicals Anything Goes and The Visit.
Wayzata Theater has eagerly begun assembling their musicals Anything Goes and The Visit.
Wayzata Theater has eagerly begun assembling their musicals Anything Goes and The Visit.
Pre-professional clubs like DECA, BPA, and HOSA are soon to host informational meetings for prospective members.
Pre-professional clubs like DECA, BPA, and HOSA are soon to host informational meetings for prospective members.
Pre-professional clubs like DECA, BPA, and HOSA are soon to host informational meetings for prospective members.
Our marching band and showstoppers performed at JJ Hill Days.
Our marching band and showstoppers performed at JJ Hill Days.
Our marching band and showstoppers performed at JJ Hill Days.
Our National Honor Society is in the process of organizing a blood drive,
Our National Honor Society is in the process of organizing a blood drive,
Our National Honor Society is in the process of organizing a blood drive,
and The Trojan Tribune, our high school newspaper, has just launched their back-to-school issue.
and The Trojan Tribune, our high school newspaper, has just launched their back-to-school issue.
and The Trojan Tribune, our high school newspaper, has just launched their back-to-school issue.
It's always amazing to hear how actively engaged our student body is within its own community.
It's always amazing to hear how actively engaged our student body is within its own community.
It's always amazing to hear how actively engaged our student body is within its own community.
Lastly, we can't forget about sports. The girls' cross-country team dominated after seeing Olaf meet,
Lastly, we can't forget about sports. The girls' cross-country team dominated after seeing Olaf meet,
Lastly, we can't forget about sports. The girls' cross-country team dominated after seeing Olaf meet,
winning first place by 100 points.
winning first place by 100 points.
winning first place by 100 points.
Girls JV and varsity tennis are currently undefeated, and boys varsity soccer just defeated Hopkins 2-0.
Girls JV and varsity tennis are currently undefeated, and boys varsity soccer just defeated Hawkins 2-0.
Girls JV and varsity tennis are currently undefeated, and boys varsity soccer just defeated Hawkins 2-0.
While our school year involves, students have an incredible number of ways to gain support and get involved within our school community.
While our school year involves, students have an incredible number of ways to gain support and get involved within our school community.
While our school year involves, students have an incredible number of ways to gain support and get involved within our school community.
Thank you. Have a great evening, and I can't wait to share more updates next month.
Thank you. Have a great evening, and I can't wait to share more updates next month.
Thank you. Have a great evening, and I can't wait to share more updates next month.
Thank you, Rachel, and congratulations. Thank you, Rachel, and congratulations. Thank you, Rachel, and congratulations. Hang on, hang on, hang on. Once, hang on, Rachel. Rachel? Hang on, hang on, hang on. Once, hang on, Rachel. Rachel? Hang on, hang on, hang on. Once, hang on, Rachel. Rachel? Can you please? Thank you. Can you please? Thank you. Can you please? Thank you. I was going to congratulate you on being elected or not, I don't know, appointed something, I was going to congratulate you on being elected or not, I don't know, appointed something, I was going to congratulate you on being elected or not, I don't know, appointed something, but you are on the National Student Council as a Minnesota representative, so congratulations on that. but you are on the National Student Council as a Minnesota representative, so congratulations on that. but you are on the National Student Council as a Minnesota representative, so congratulations on that. So now I'm going to ask my board colleagues if they have any comments or questions for you. So now I'm going to ask my board colleagues if they have any comments or questions for you. So now I'm going to ask my board colleagues if they have any comments or questions for you.
I do. Congrats. We have a history with Natsuko, and it's super fun, and so congrats to that.
I do. Congrats. We have a history with Natsuko, and it's super fun, and so congrats to that.
I do. Congrats. We have a history with Natsuko, and it's super fun, and so congrats to that. And then my question for you is, tell us about The Trojan Tribune.
And then my question for you is, tell us about The Trojan Tribune.
And then my question for you is, tell us about The Trojan Tribune. And so last year, I think they set an order for, like, outside the high school that there was maybe a QR code to do.
And so last year, I think they set an order for, like, outside the high school that there was maybe a QR code to do.
And so last year, I think they set an order for, like, outside the high school that there was maybe a QR code to do. How do we, how do, can people outside the high school read it, and so how?
How do we, how do, can people outside the high school read it, and so how?
How do we, how do, can people outside the high school read it, and so how?
Yes, so I believe The Trojan Tribune isn't exactly affiliated with the high school,
Yes, so I believe The Trojan Tribune isn't exactly affiliated with the high school,
Yes, so I believe The Trojan Tribune isn't exactly affiliated with the high school,
but they do provide seasonal reports on happenings within our school district.
but they do provide seasonal reports on happenings within our school district.
but they do provide seasonal reports on happenings within our school district.
You can access it through their Instagram. I know they provide QR code, QR codes to their issues,
You can access it through their Instagram. I know they provide QR code, QR codes to their issues,
You can access it through their Instagram. I know they provide QR code, QR codes to their issues,
and so I highly recommend, yeah, everybody read it. I'm not exactly sure what their Instagram account is,
and so I highly recommend, yeah, everybody read it. I'm not exactly sure what their Instagram account is,
and so I highly recommend, yeah, everybody read it. I'm not exactly sure what their Instagram account is,
but I know it is accessible through there.
but I know it is accessible through there.
but I know it is accessible through there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
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 All right, now you may go. Thank you, Rachel. Again. All right, now you may go. Thank you, Rachel. Again. All right, now you may go. Thank you, Rachel. Again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll see you again next month. Hopefully, we'll see you again next month. Hopefully, we'll see you again next month.
Yes.
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 Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot. Okay, the next item on the agenda is recognitions. Hold on, please. I'm going to read the, are you going to read the MSBA thing? Okay, the next item on the agenda is recognitions. Hold on, please. I'm going to read the, are you going to read the MSBA thing? Okay, the next item on the agenda is recognitions. Hold on, please. I'm going to read the, are you going to read the MSBA thing?
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our school board meeting. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our school board meeting. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our school board meeting. I think you might be present on the night when we've set an all-time new record for attendance I think you might be present on the night when we've set an all-time new record for attendance I think you might be present on the night when we've set an all-time new record for attendance in this facility for a board meeting, so great to see all of you and welcome, and thanks for joining us. in this facility for a board meeting, so great to see all of you and welcome, and thanks for joining us. in this facility for a board meeting, so great to see all of you and welcome, and thanks for joining us. It's always my honor at our regular school board meetings to convene the recognitions portion of the meeting, It's always my honor at our regular school board meetings to convene the recognitions portion of the, of the meeting, It's always my honor at our regular school board meetings to convene the recognitions portion of the, of the meeting, and tonight, we are recognizing our very own school board, and while I read the script, and tonight, we are recognizing our very own school board, and while I read the script, and tonight, we are recognizing our very own school board, and while I read the script, perhaps I'll just invite them to feel free to sit right where they're at, perhaps I'll just invite them to feel free to sit right where they're at, perhaps I'll just invite them to feel free to sit right where they're at, and then after I read the script, we'll come down here, take a photo, and then after I read the script, we'll come down here, take a photo, and then after I read the script, we'll come down here, take a photo, and then provide an opportunity for our chair or any others to share a few thoughts if they would like to do so. and then provide an opportunity for our chair or any others to share a few thoughts if they would like to do so. and then provide an opportunity for our chair or any others to share a few thoughts if they would like to do so. Probably out of the sake of convenience, feel free after the photo to make your way back to your seat, if you would. Probably out of the sake of convenience, feel free after the photo to make your way back to your seat, if you would. Probably out of the sake of convenience, feel free after the photo to make your way back to your seat, if you would. So I'd like to share the following with you in regard to our school board. So I'd like to share the following with you in regard to our school board. So I'd like to share the following with you in regard to our school board. September is Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, a time to honor the dedicated men and women September is Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, a time to honor the dedicated men and women September is Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, a time to honor the dedicated men and women who serve as the guiding light for student success in our public schools. who serve as the guiding light for student success in our public schools. who serve as the guiding light for student success in our public schools. Throughout the state and right here in Wayzata, school board members serve countless hours Throughout the state and right here in Wayzata, school board members serve countless hours Throughout the state and right here in Wayzata, school board members serve countless hours to ensure our students have access to high-quality learning, extracurricular opportunities, to ensure our students have access to high-quality learning, extracurricular opportunities, to ensure our students have access to high-quality learning, extracurricular opportunities, and a public education system that helps them thrive. and a public education system that helps them thrive. and a public education system that helps them thrive. These public servants are chosen by their communities to govern local schools, These public servants are chosen by their communities to govern local schools, These public servants are chosen by their communities to govern local schools, manage multimillion-dollar budgets, and make decisions that directly impact the future of our students and families. manage multimillion-dollar budgets, and make decisions that directly impact the future of our students and families. manage multimillion-dollar budgets, and make decisions that directly impact the future of our students and families. School board members don't seek the spotlight, but they play a critical civic role. School board members don't seek the spotlight, but they play a critical civic role. School board members don't seek the spotlight, but they play a critical civic role. They help set the vision for our schools, shape educational priorities, They help set the vision for our schools, shape educational priorities, They help set the vision for our schools, shape educational priorities, and make tough decisions, often after extensive deliberation and study. and make tough decisions, often after extensive deliberation and study. and make tough decisions, often after extensive deliberation and study. Their leadership touches every corner of our school system. Their leadership touches every corner of our school system. Their leadership touches every corner of our school system. Their efforts can often go unseen, but their impact is felt in every classroom, every program, and every student's success story. Their efforts can often go unseen, but their impact is felt in every classroom, every program, and every student's success story. Their efforts can often go unseen, but their impact is felt in every classroom, every program, and every student's success story. This month and every month, we encourage our community to say thank you to these dedicated individuals. This month and every month, we encourage our community to say thank you to these dedicated individuals. This month and every month, we encourage our community to say thank you to these dedicated individuals. Their service makes local control of public education possible, Their service makes local control of public education possible, Their service makes local control of public education possible, and their leadership helps shape the future of our schools and communities. and their leadership helps shape the future of our schools and communities. and their leadership helps shape the future of our schools and communities. We proudly recognize the members of the Wayzata School Board for their service and commitment, We proudly recognize the members of the Wayzata School Board for their service and commitment, We proudly recognize the members of the Wayzata School Board for their service and commitment, and I'll list their names and years of service. and I'll list their names and years of service. and I'll list their names and years of service. Sarah Johansson, 12 years. Millen Sahoni, four years. Heidi Cater, four years. Sheila Pryor, three years. Sarah Johansson, 12 years. Millen Sahoni, four years. Heidi Cater, four years. Sheila Pryor, three years. Sarah Johansson, 12 years. Millen Sahoni, four years. Heidi Cater, four years. Sheila Pryor, three years. Paris Bendey, two years. Valentina Ayers, two years. And Dan Janestra, two years. Paris Bendey, two years. Valentina Ayers, two years. And Dan Janestra, two years. Paris Bendey, two years. Valentina Ayers, two years. And Dan Janestra, two years. Would you please join me in a round of applause for our board? Would you please join me in a round of applause for our board? Would you please join me in a round of applause for our board? And just a moment off-script, if I may, I would just like to also say thanks to the seven of you And just a moment off-script, if I may, I would just like to also say thanks to the seven of you And just a moment off-script, if I may, I would just like to also say thanks to the seven of you for your dedicated efforts, for all of the work that you put in, not only in preparing for each of our two school board meetings, for your dedicated efforts, for all of the work that you put in, not only in preparing for each of our two school board meetings, for your dedicated efforts, for all of the work that you put in, not only in preparing for each of our two school board meetings, but they also serve on several committees and are involved in our strategic partner groups, but they also serve on several committees and are involved in our strategic partner groups, but they also serve on several committees and are involved in our strategic partner groups, such as District 287 and others, which are very critical and important to the overriding success of our school district. such as District 287 and others, which are very critical and important to the overriding success of our school district. such as District 287 and others, which are very critical and important to the overriding success of our school district. So it's not everybody that gets seven bosses, but superintendents do, so anyway. So it's not everybody that gets seven bosses, but superintendents do, so anyway. So it's not everybody that gets seven bosses, but superintendents do, so anyway. I appreciate all that you do, and if you would, please come forward. We'll take a photo, and then I'll invite you to come back, I appreciate all that you do, and if you would, please come forward. We'll take a photo, and then I'll invite you to come back, I appreciate all that you do, and if you would, please come forward. We'll take a photo, and then I'll invite you to come back, and if you, I would like to make a few comments, then you can do that. and if you, I would like to make a few comments, then you can do that. and if you, I would like to make a few comments, then you can do that.
We do the photo first or the comments first? We do the photo first or the comments first? We do the photo first or the comments first?
We can do it either way. We can do it either way. We can do it either way.
Let's do the comments first, and then do the picture, and then we'll go to the retiree recognition. Let's do the comments first, and then do the picture, and then we'll go to the retiree recognition. Let's do the comments first, and then do the picture, and then we'll go to the retiree recognition.
Sure. Sure. Sure.
But I just want to say happy Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, everyone. But I just want to say happy Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, everyone. But I just want to say happy Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, everyone. Please make any comments if you feel, you know, feel so. Please make any comments if you feel, feel, you know, feel so. Please make any comments if you feel, feel, you know, feel so. Yes, boss? Yes, boss? Yes, boss?
Yeah, just wanted to take this opportunity and thank you all.
Yeah, just wanted to take this opportunity and thank you all.
Yeah, just wanted to take this opportunity and thank you all.
It is an honor to be sitting here amongst, you know, my peers as well as the community members.
It is an honor to be sitting here amongst, you know, my peers as well as the community members.
It is an honor to be sitting here amongst, you know, my peers as well as the community members.
Last year and a half, the school board meeting, when the schools, teachers, students, when they come and present,
Last year and a half, the school board meeting, when the schools, teachers, students, when they come and present,
Last year and a half, the school board meeting, when the schools, teachers, students, when they come and present,
that is really the spotlight, and that actually shows, you know, the work, the effort that you all put in.
that is really the spotlight, and that actually shows, you know, the work, the effort that you all put in.
that is really the spotlight, and that actually shows, you know, the work, the effort that you all put in.
Yes, we are here, but again, thank you for all your help and support who actually make it happen on the ground.
Yes, we are here, but again, thank you for all your help and support who actually make it happen on the ground.
Yes, we are here, but again, thank you for all your help and support who actually make it happen on the ground.
So again, thank you all.
So again, thank you all.
So again, thank you all.[1499.12]
I'll second that, really from the bottom of my heart personally. Thank you so much for all your dedication to our students, I'll second that, really from the bottom of my heart personally. Thank you so much for all your dedication to our students, your colleagues, and our community as a whole. your colleagues, and our community as a whole. You know, Soffman said that when we, you know, made the decision to run for the school board, You know, Soffman said that when we, you know, made the decision to run for the school board, there was maybe some, you know, uncertainty. It's how do you, you know, navigate this? there was maybe some, you know, uncertainty. It's how do you, you know, navigate this? But I think what we've found is that we campaign in poetry, but we govern in prose. That was said once. But I think what we've found is that we campaign in poetry, but we govern in prose. That was said once. And to see the dedication of our students, our teachers, our staff is so remarkable, And to see the dedication of our students, our teachers, our staff is so remarkable, and to be part of a community I've lived in Wayzata School is nearly my whole life, and it's such a wonderful place to be. and to be a part of a community I've lived in Wayzata School is nearly my whole life, and it's such a wonderful place to be. So to everyone who has made our district story possible, thank you, and we look forward to no doubt countless years of future success. So to everyone who has made our district story possible, thank you, and we look forward to no doubt countless years of future success. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Okay, so I just want to just say, just one, one thing. Okay, so I just want to just say, just one, one thing. I feel very, very honored and privileged that the community put me in this seat in the service of students. I feel very, very honored and privileged that the community put me in this seat in the service of students. This is the best job I've ever had, by far. So thank you, everyone. This is the best job I've ever had, by far. So thank you, everyone. All right, let's go to the side there by the podium, if you could, please join me for a photograph. All right, let's go to the side there by the podium, if you could, please join me for a photograph. All right, let's go to the side there by the podium, if you could, please join me for a photograph. Well, even got a certificate there. The certificate is from Minnesota School Board. Is it? Yeah, it is from the Minnesota School Board Association, which is kind of the parent organization that has about 330-plus districts as members of the association. So this certificate is from them in the recognition of school board month. Sarah, would you mind joining Chase for the next part of the recognition?
I think I should turn the microphone on. We only have one additional recognition this evening. And it's also our tradition at our regular school board meetings to announce the names of those who have indicated their intent to retire since the previous board meeting that we had. And we have one who has indicated such, and that is Sarah Stack, Special Education Supervisor at Wayzata High School for three years. I've not spotted Sarah here, but Sarah, if you're here, feel free to come forward and be recognized. Probably tuned in via YouTube tonight, hearing her name. Let's give her a round of applause.
All right, congratulations to the retiree and thank you, Sarah and Dr. Anderson. Okay, moving on to the next item, the district spotlight presentation by Dr. Anderson.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and all in attendance tonight, and our staff that are here with us this evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to do the annual back-to-school update. This has been a tradition for, I think, the time prior to my beginning this work at the September meeting, just to kind of give a quick overview. So what I've done is put together, in tandem with several of our staff members, just a quick flyover of some of the duties and responsibilities of the different departmental areas that work to help get ready for the school year. It's an opportunity to say thank you to a number of folks for their hard work and to just share a few of the things that are on the radar for the coming year. So I appreciate a great deal having this opportunity to share with you tonight. And hopefully, my technology will work, and it did. Here are a few photos from around the school district and from the first day. And obviously, school buses are a big part of that first day, welcoming students into the building and helping to ensure that they get off to a great start is really important. And I did a little bit of math the other day and was reminded that this is my 18th first day, or Tuesday was my 18th first day of school in Wayzata, my 43rd first day of school since I began as a first-year teacher. And I hate to admit, it's my 61st consecutive year of having a first day of school since I started kindergarten. So that's a pretty good run. And six decades of first days of school is pretty good. And while that might be an indicator I'm getting old, the first day of school never does. It's always a fantastic first day, and I just appreciate all the work that everybody put in to help get us launched and airborne and soon to be at cruising altitude, I'm sure. Maybe we're not fully there yet, but we'll get there. And I just appreciate the efforts of everybody. And that group is pretty comprehensive. The list is here, I won't spend a lot of time on each line, but do want to acknowledge and thank our teachers, many of whom are here this evening, our Wayzata Education Association, all the support staff and the principals for their dedicated efforts to help get everything ready for school. Having been a teacher and having served a number of years as an assistant principal and principal, I know there are a number of moving parts and a lot of things that have to be dealt with, intended to help ensure a really solid first day of school, to make sure the kids get off to a great start. Also, our Departments of Human Resources, Teaching and Learning, Finance and Operations, and I'll hit on each one of these a little bit as we move through the slides this evening. All contribute to help make sure that we're ready to go on that first day of school, also including our Equity and Inclusion Department, Community Ed, who I always kind of debate about Community Ed because I don't know that their season really ever starts and finishes. It's kind of continuous all summer and into the school year as well. So they had a lot of summer programming, as did our special services staff, Technology Services, our Communications and Community Engagement Department, all of our district administrative staff for making sure that all of the materials and supplies for the school year were ready, and just a whole long list of others. It's a great team effort. Everybody has to pitch in and help make sure that a lot of things come together in high-quality fashion so that we can help ensure that we get our students off to a great start. As a reminder, we have three executive directors, Dave Lutz, Dana Miller, and Trevor Peterson for HR, Teaching and Learning, and also Finance and Operations. And these individuals are also part of our Strategy Leadership Team, which is the superintendent's cabinet and includes Jenny Ebern in Community Ed, Sol Vaherdy, Equity and Inclusion, Ginny Niasse in Special Services, Amy Parnell in Communications, Wade Phillips in Technology, and Rachel Felkowski is our WEA president, who also attends our SLT meetings on a weekly basis. First, a few of the highlights for the Human Resources Department. Dave Lutz, again, is our executive director in that role. And you can see all of the different areas that our Department of Human Resources is responsible for, recruitment and hiring. And I'll share a little bit in a moment, the numbers of new staff members that we've welcomed into the school district this year and aligned with which areas or departments that they're connected to, all of the benefits administration, negotiations of contracts, and ensuring that those are maintained throughout the year. FMLA, leaves, ADA accommodations, Title IX requirements, and employee support and collaboratively working through issues. So those are a handful of high-level duties that our HR department works on. You can see that we hired 164 new people this year. And that means not 164 interviews, but probably three, four, or five times that number in order to go through a long list of candidates and onboard and bring in new individuals into the school district. So we put a lot of time and effort into our hiring. It's among the most important things that we do. And making sure that we bring in talented, high-quality people that complement those that have been with us for a number of years. And it's always a fun opportunity to meet the new staff and have an opportunity to welcome them into the district. This is a pie chart of how the different positions break out within the school district. And you can see with that number at top, we're a little over 1,500 total staff members throughout the school district in a variety of different positions. And again, I'm just always really proud about how this team of individuals comes together. And regardless of what their specific role is, they all contribute to the creation of the conditions that make for a great place to work and a great place for our students to learn. So we appreciate each and every group on that pie chart for all the work that they do for us. Teaching and Learning Department has a pretty comprehensive list of priorities for the coming year. And in the event that you might have any questions, I've got my team here ready to respond to some of those. But I thought for the sake of efficiency, we would work through these with me sharing the high-level overview and then creating opportunities for you to ask any questions that you might have. I'm sure a lot of the people in the room see these terms, and they're well-suited to speak in much more depth and detail than I can with them. But the key headers are the curriculum implementation and standards for both elementary and secondary. You can see the departmental areas that are currently under review and that will be priorities for the current year. The ongoing work with our Literacy and Read Act, which I know all of you were involved along the way, hearing about the professional development, the different things that we were doing around the district. And generally, I have heard positive reviews in regard to the quality of training, although it was intense and time-consuming and a lot of work. I've heard good reviews on much of what was done and that it was very helpful. Student system supports, including our enrichment program, our MTSS program. And you'll notice a term there, ABRE, A-B-R-E. That's the name of a software package that we're going to be piloting this year. And a number of folks that have become familiar with that are very excited about what that is going to be able to do for us in regard to data tracking of our students. And it should really give us a lot of access to information to help get a better understanding about how to be even more responsive to the unique needs of our students. And we're excited about being able to implement that here in the coming year as well. And restorative practices, professional learning and new staff development. You can see there's a few statistics about the number of hours of professional learning this summer. 650 hours are listed there. Academy for Wayzata Educators is part of our Q-COMP or ALCOMP program that also creates opportunities for our own staff to create and deliver and lead book studies or other types of studies that have a team of individuals with common interests. And then, of course, new teacher orientation and mentorship programs, as you saw on the list, are 86 new teachers that we're onboarding this year. That does not necessarily mean that they have not had teaching experience in other districts, but we do our best to help ensure that they have opportunities to learn about the curriculum and the unique aspects of our school district. Technology and innovation, again, lots of software packages there and things that our teachers use to help ensure that students have online access and are able to have ease of access to all of the curriculum materials that are being delivered in the classroom. And then finally, student achievement, continuous improvement. That's always an ongoing focus for Teaching and Learning Department and really all of our departments. It's always a focus area to continuously improve and help ensure that we continue to make progress moving forward. And we're fortunate that we have teachers that are learners and want to continue to improve their practice and work really hard in teams and in their PLCs. And several in each building on the built teams or the building instructional leadership teams, which is connected to that Center for Educational Leadership, CEL program, that you've heard a lot about in a number of board meetings over the past several years. So I think that we're really working hard to try to seek better alignment and helping to ensure that we have a really clear pathway forward to help ensure that we deliver on that mission for our students of excellence, for each and every student. In the Finance and Operations Department, we have a new executive director in that role, Trevor Peterson, to my left. And there's a, you know, really, I could probably have just had the bottom bullet point on that first column of all things finance and operations-related. Pretty much summarizes everything else on the page. But you're all apprised of our annual budgets and that process by law. Public school districts in Minnesota need to have a budget approved by no later than June 30th of the fiscal, of the day before the start of a new fiscal year. Working collaboratively with our auditors, public school districts go through an annual audit. So there's a careful review with a number of auditors to help ensure that all the practices are being followed and dollars are being utilized in ways with which they're intended. Managing capital budgets and projects and LTFM, which is Long-Term Facilities Maintenance. As you're aware, we approve work every year to implement with our LTFM. And I would say, every year when I've done PTA meetings, I've been able to share with the parents that I meet with that our buildings have never been better than they are this year. And I think it's true because we've either built new buildings, built on new additions to many of them. And we've also done a lot of upgrading to mechanical systems and air ventilation systems and all of the things that help keep our facilities really in top-notch shape. Our Finance Department works closely with our HR department. And there's a lot of complexities of administering employee benefits plans and programs. And those two departments work closely to help ensure that those are implemented well and that staff have opportunities to gain a clear understanding about their benefits packages. Overseeing our OPEB Fund, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is a trust that was established about 17 years ago, I think, and has done a great job of meeting the needs of our post-employment obligations for employee benefits. And that was a great foresight from the school boards at that time to establish that. A lot of districts need to utilize general ed fund for many of those benefits for retired employees. So that's been a wonderful thing for us. And then over on the far right, the Finance and Operations Department, working in tandem, as the bottom bullet point indicates, with our District Welcome Center, really track all the enrollment projections, determining attendance areas, which we all just went through that in the past year. I'm glad to announce we will not be going through that again this year. Tracking our school-age students that are within the district, managing open enrollment, inter-district transfers, which is essentially that process of moving from one building to another. On rare occasions, we do accommodate some of those requests. Monitoring special education placements, managing the homeschool requests. We do have some families who choose to homeschool their students. And there's paperwork that's associated with that that's required by the state to be on file with the school district of attendance. So we work with that. And also fostering non-public school relationships and monitoring students choosing other educational placements. So even though they might make a choice to go to a private school, they're still connected to us in some forms and fashion. So a lot of diverse, different types of aspects of the Finance and Operations Department. This is a summary document for this year's enrollment when compared to last year's. So this year's, this is as of about September 1st. I think that's the date that I pulled these data to put this chart together. But I've highlighted a few numbers. So for the first time in our school district's history, our high school has surpassed that 4,000, grade nine through 12 student mark for the first time in the history of our district. We've surpassed 13,000 K-12 students. When I started here in this role on July 1 of 2008, I think we had 9,500 students K-12. So we've added about 3,500 students in grades K-12 in that time period. So that's why we've been building new schools and adding on and continuing to update and refurbish for the first time ever. We're over an average of 1,000 students per grade level, if you add up elementary, middle school, and high school. And when compared to last year, we're up about 201 students. So we did grow. We did not grow by as much as our projection models were suggesting. So we're monitoring that, the projection models. And as you know, we went through a couple iterations of that in the past year, actually three or four of them. And the average was kind of indicating 350 to 400 students. And I think we're still in that post-COVID era where we're trying to hit a good equilibrium again and get on a good trajectory line. It's been difficult since that time because you might recall that in the 2020-21 school year, we were down 200 students from what we were the year before. And we didn't grow by the 250 that had been projected, all related to the pandemic. And that really altered our ability to use historical attendance and enrollment data to make projections out into the future. So we're still trying to equalize that and establish new trend lines and, you know, so that we can be sure that we can do the best job that we can of projecting. You'll notice that in elementary, we actually have 32 fewer students on September 1 than we had a year ago. That's usually contingent upon the kindergarten size. And we were lower in kindergarten this year. Our so-called capture rate, it's probably not the nicest term, but the rate of attendance within the public school for the students that reside within our school district, the kindergarten students, has been a little bit lower. And I think other schools, school districts are experiencing a little bit of that too. So we're trying to figure out what are the new kindergarten trend lines going to be. Middle school went up 142 students. That's probably a function of a larger sixth grade and a relatively smaller eighth grade to make up some of those. Although, middle school is a common transition time for students who may have gone to a private elementary school and then who make their way into the middle school. And we're up about 91 students at the high school. Again, some of that is related to the fact that we had a, probably a smaller graduating class last year than we had in a larger ninth-grade class coming in. So that, in addition to just more families moving into the school district, is continuing to help us with this increased growth rate. This is a document that I put together to show what we use for elementary class size ratios. I know the school board's always interested in seeing where we're at. So if you look at that far-left shaded box, that indicates our staffing number that we utilize for class sizes. That next shaded box under the header that says "previous year" was the last year's average class size. And I can't remember where I pulled that data from, if it was September 1 or if it was at the end of the year. And then if you follow the arrows over to the right, that first column and kind of the peach-shaded area indicates where we were at September 1. So in general, you can kind of read across there to see where the trend lines are. In most cases, with the exception of fourth grade, I think we've dropped. And if you look at the very bottom line in those two columns, K-5 for last year was at 24.6 average, and on September 1 was 23.8. So that just kind of gives you a little bit of a feel where we're at with grade-level enrollment and average class sizes. You're pretty well acquainted with our facilities. I don't know, at some point in the future, this slide might look a little bit different if we end up building another elementary school, which would be number 10, and perhaps a fourth middle school. But we do have one early learning school, as you're aware, connected on to Oakwood Elementary School, nine elementaries, three middle schools, one high school, and our one transition school, which continues to grow and accommodate more students that are 18- to 22-year-olds that continue with their public education following a more traditional senior year of high school. Some of the projects that we're working on, I won't go through all of these again, line item by line item, but we're doing quite a lot of roof replacements with our long-term facility maintenance during the summer months, parking lots. A lot of the things that we do with our long-term facilities maintenance aren't necessarily all that exciting, like roofs and new sidewalks and parking lots and those types of things. But they're all necessary, just like with our own homes. And we're fortunate that the state of Minnesota has a good long-term facilities maintenance. And we're fortunate that the state of Minnesota has a good long-term facilities maintenance plan and, and program for public education and public schools that we have been able to utilize a lot of resources over the last several years to upgrade our buildings and get them and keep them in good working order. Some other work, Oakwood is getting a new kitchen oven. I hope that works well for the kids. West Middle School locker room innovation, we're, we had about 13,000 square feet in West Middle School that has been converted into three new music rooms. So that ability for us to be able to do that, as you might recall, was the reason we were able to take three feeder schools at West, which really helped alleviate some of the crowding at Central and allowed us to go back to a two-feeder school system at East Middle School as well, which really East can accommodate two elementaries comfortably, three not. And while Central probably can accommodate five elementary schools, we have to wrestle with, do we want middle schools of 1,800 to 2,500 students? And, and West now with this modification should be in a pretty good place to be, to be able to accommodate those three elementary schools. A couple of quick facts and buildings and grounds, we have about 2 million square feet of building space placed upon about 500 acres of land. And we have about 90 custodians that help keep our facilities in great shape and conducive environments to learning. We have about 85 buses, they run 495 routes. We have 45 special education buses in addition that run 172 routes. Our buses drive about 10,000 miles a day, which is two and a half trips around the Earth's equator each week. So that's, that's pretty good. I'm not sure that data's right. Yeah, I think I have to redo that, I think. Might be two trips around the Earth's equator, but it's still a lot of driving. It's kind of a fun stat. Even had a parent the other day at a meeting I was at that recalled it, or no, it was a city council meeting, I think, a parent who's on the council said, oh, I remember that stat. And anyway, it's a lot of driving and a lot of, lot of safe deliveries, thankfully. We're 95% staff. That does not mean we have 5% of our buses cruising around without a driver. It just means we have to scramble to fill those empty driver seats with long-term subs and using drivers, literally, I think a number of them have been brought in from California to drive for a while. I think they head back before the snow flies, which probably we'd all want to do. And then food service, I've often joked, I was just talking about transportation. We run the largest Uber service in town and we also run the largest restaurant in town. Last year we served, it looks like about a million and a half, 1,600,000 lunches and just shy of 400,000 breakfasts. So you can see that we have a pretty big food service program and have to compliment Michelle and, and all those that work with her to deliver that, that program to our students. That's a, that's a big deal. Our community ed department, Jenny Ebert is our director of community ed. And they exist to help our E12 students and families thrive and be successful. Community ed continues to grow, it evolves, it encompasses each and every of our 75,000 students within the footprint of the school district. I oftentimes share that I like to think that our school district is really owned and is part of all 75,000 of those residents, whether they were born last week or if they just had their 100th birthday. They are part of us and we want the school district to be theirs as well and to serve their needs and, and for them to have educational opportunities and for the school district to be a source of pride and something that they are happy to brag about as well. They're good messengers for us and, and we're very fortunate to be in a supportive community. Community ed is about 300 full and part-time staff in the department and it's embedded within all the school buildings, whether it's before, after-school care and/or utilizing facilities and, and providing other types of, of learning opportunities. This is always one of my favorite schematics because it shows the complexity of community ed. You might recall, I don't know how many years ago now it was, I, I actually spent one year being a community ed director here and superintendent, dual duty. It was in a transition period where we did a review of the program in advance of when we sought to hire our full-time new replacement, which at the time was Jenny Ebert. So Annie Doty had the great idea for me to go back to the University of Minnesota and get my community ed license so that the year after she retired from HR duties, she could work in partnership with me. I would have the license and she would do kind of a program review. And I think it was really a, a good thing for us to have done because it created an opportunity for us to take a good look at our programming and what are some of the changes or modifications we might want to make. And I would like to thank and hope that Jenny would say that it was helpful that we had a lot of good data for her to get launched into the work with. But you can just see the diverse set of things that community ed delivers, a lot of classes, the, the before and after school Wayzetta Kids Program, which serves about 1,500 students right now, elementary and probably some middle school, but I think mostly elementary school students. Our volunteer club, I think we've typically had, well, it says there are just about 1,976 high school students that are involved in volunteer club, formerly called YES, I think, at the high school. We went through some rebranding with this a few years back to try to name things that sort of made sense as to what it is actually that these groups do. And it's been a real popular program and, and yeah, we're, we're just fortunate. You see our students around all over the place and it's, it's fun to run into them. Early learning school, we provide a lot of pre-K programming at our, at our site, our early learning school as well at the elementary schools. We do our best to maintain at least one classroom in each elementary school to accommodate pre-K learners for children that will most likely be attending elementary in that building. We have a lot of great strategic partnerships. And I think I might have mentioned briefly that community ed is also responsible for overseeing facilities and for managing those spaces and, and all of the agreements and arrangements for leasing our facilities. Special services includes not only our special education programming, but our mental health and co-located partnerships, multilingual learning, health services, and our 504 plans. And Jenny shared these two goals, which are pretty consistent with our built teams across the district of focusing on an academic goal, our academic goals, and also a student experience goal, along with all of the other standard work that is done in buildings through the leadership teams and, and PLCs and, and across the whole school building itself. But again, this is somewhat tied to our CEL program. And a lot of cross-departmental work occurs with this too, through our MTSS. And that's a Minnesota, help me Dana, MTSS.
[inaudible]
Thank you. I always think I'm going to know that and remember it and then I draw a blank when I try to pull it out. But anyway, those are some of the special services team focus areas. Technology, we're so appreciative to Wade Phillips and all of his tech team members. A few of the things that they focus on are listed here. Personalizing experiences, accessibility and adaptability for students, updating access to educational resources, upgrading classroom technology, replacing student devices, replacing staff devices, providing safety, security, and privacy protections, providing infrastructure to meet evolving needs and maintaining essential technology supports. These are some of the goals for our technology department for the coming year. Excellent service and support. I think most anybody you talk to in regard to the technology level of service would say it's off the charts and top-notch. And we have to compliment Wade and his team for the work that they do. And if you envision, which I know you have, all of the different moving parts in our technology department, all the tools and all the systems and the software. And our thing lately has been the wireless internet's been acting up and creating issues. And so it's sort of a daily adventure for Wade and his team, but they just manage it seemingly with ease and help make sure that everything is continuing to work well for us. Digital literacy and citizenship, ensuring that we have a, a good platform and a good opportunity for students to understand, you know, the, all the appropriate ways to utilize technology and to understand all the operational mechanisms with it. Professional development, we have a number of tech support folks that help our staff learn more about software and hardware. And security and privacy is a big deal. We work with a cybersecurity firm that does, I think, an annual audit and puts together a really nice scorecard and set of metrics. And we often, well, we always score very high with that. And I know that that's a very high priority for Wade and his team. Developing our infrastructure and also future readiness, just with that whole culture of innovation and, and adopting and the emerging technologies. As you know, those change quickly and, and a lot of things occur in a relatively short period of time and all of that is accelerating. There's some of the, the outcomes for 2526. I texted or emailed Wade today and just asked, are these completed or are they underway? And he said, most of them are done. But just that ongoing instructional support, technology upgrades to 170 classrooms, I think that was primarily summer work. Certified staff got their laptop upgrades this year. I know a lot of people were coming through the district service center, getting their new computers and getting those ready to go. Exchange of about 3,500 iPads for students. The ABRE system that I mentioned before is something that our technology department will be supporting. Internet and firewall upgrades and protections. Network switching refresh, don't ask me what that is, I have absolutely no idea, but it's a good thing Wade and his team know. And I'm sure it's important and I'm glad they did it because I'm sure it's going to make a nice difference. I'll have to ask him what that one is, I guess, but. And then just campus physical security upgrades, that's always on everyone's mind, cybersecurity I mentioned before, and the ever-evolving AI, whatever that will become for us in regard to operational components and, and curriculum areas as well. So a few things on the radar for 2526, sorry for the size of that, it's a little bit hard to read, but as I mentioned, onboarding a lot of new teachers, facility studies. As you know, we've kind of been involved in facilities for, I don't know, all the, the whole time I've been here, I think. I remember when I was interviewing and engaging with some folks about the anticipated growth in the district. I forget who it was, but it, I think it was a little bit of a miss in that I remember hearing, well, we don't really anticipate there's going to be much growth and there shouldn't be a lot of construction in our future. And I think I've had a hard hat on nearly every, every week or every year during the time that I've been here. So we continue to grow, we continue to have a lot of new facilities that are going to be needed. Continued development of the district roadmap, that's been in place since 2011 and updated several times. And that's always our, one of our guiding documents. Just monitoring our current budget and also considering future budget years, and that's so small, I can hardly see it myself. But monitoring enrollment projections, as you know, we get our funding based primarily on number of students enrolled in the district and our voter-approved levies that complement the state aid that comes to us, as well as categorical aids for special education and in other title programs, et cetera. So those are the sources of funding for our school district. There was some reduction in some of the categorical state funding for 2526. You've heard me speak about this before at other meetings where, two years ago, they'd allocated a three-year rollout for additional student support services money to hire counselors or other support staff. And we were to have gotten an additional $300,000 in those revenues for the 2526 school year. And during the process, the legislative process, they ended up cutting that. So we, as you know, the session ends in June and we hired the counselors in March and April. So we're fortunate that we have counselors this year for the first time ever in all of our schools. We're happy we were able to move forward and do that. And we also had a reduction, kind of a similar type of story with some of our reimbursements for special education transportation. So collectively, those two things are about $500,000 to $600,000. So I share that just because, you know, and there's a couple other points here about the uncertainty with school funding, whether it's from the state or from the federal government. I mean, it's, it's just, it's a challenging business model in that we really only control expenditures and we don't really have a lot of opportunity to, I don't know if to use the, the private sector terminology, increase the prices of our products and services. We just can't do that to help balance things. So we're reliant upon state funding that comes our way. And there's also a task force, which you're probably aware of, where they're assembling to take a look at special education costs in the state of Minnesota. And I think the goal is to find a way to reduce by $250 million statewide special education funding for the next biennium. And in the event that they're not able to come up with that, then they'll, I think the plan is to dole that out to individual school districts to figure out how to help ensure that they can make the budget because there is a forecast for the next biennium of significant uncertainties again and, and deficits. So we're kind of heading out of this time when there were some resources and funds to a time when it might be getting a little more challenging in that next biennium. So anyway, those are things that we have to take a look at, not only for the current budget year, but also for future and ensuring that we can continue to be positioned as well as we can. And a last couple of things before I think I hit my last slide, this is probably it here. I'll start, I think, next week, meeting with PTA groups and other groups around the district. I'll probably make a second round of PTAs this year. In the event that we move forward and determine that we're going to go to the voters in the spring for facilities, I'll probably make another round in January and February to all the PTA groups and provide an update and a presentation then. And my final point that I make there is we just have a whole lot of standard work that we do and a lot of wonderful things happening in our district. And again, while a number of our teachers are here, I would like to say thank you to all of you for your great work. My own daughter started her kindergarten teaching last week in another district in the metro area and she's excited and spends fun to meet her kids and she's off to a great start as well. So I get to hear the dad stories too and all the fun that happens within classrooms. I think we have our back-to-school video that maybe some of you have seen. We're going to pull that up and I'll let that be my closer and then we'll turn it over for any questions that you might have.
Dr. G from Greenwood, and we are so glad you're coming because let's face it, school is a lot more fun when you're here. So come!
Hi, everyone. We are super excited to welcome you to Northwoods Elementary School. One thing that we're looking forward to this year is our
New Inclusive Playground!
Have a great year. Let's howl it out!
Hello, I'm Marion Boy, principal of Central Middle School. On behalf of the staff, I warmly welcome you to Central Middle School, where we are building community, every student, every opportunity, every day.
Hello, my name is Scott Gengler. I'm the principal here at Wayzetta High School. Want to wish everyone a wonderful start to the 2526 school year here at Wayzetta. We are going to welcome over 4,000 students for the first time in the history of Wayzetta Public Schools. On behalf of everyone here in the Wayzetta High School community, we wish you all a wonderful start to the school year.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ryan Carls and I am the principal at West Middle School. We are super excited for the 2526 school year. Behind me, you'll see just some of the construction we have going on here at West. We got new windows through much of the building, some new smart panels, and our locker room has started the process of being converted to an unbelievable music suite.
Hi, Dr. Kari Wareman here, proud principal of Kimberly Lane Elementary, welcoming you back for the 2025, 2026 school year. We've had a lot of construction this summer and a lot of big changes. Also, we have a lot of new friends coming our way. About a third of our building could be new students. So excited to meet all of you and to welcome back all the other coyotes that are coming back. See you soon.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Mackesy, principal at Gleason Lake Elementary. I can't wait to have all our readers back at school. Looking forward to seeing you soon.
Hey, it's Michelle, welcoming back our new and returning students for the early learning school. Parents, if you want to get involved, join our advisory council.
Hi, I'm Ross Williams, principal here at Sunset Hill. We cannot wait to get the year started. We're looking forward to a great year of learning and making new friends. See you soon.
Hello, I'm Sarah Bettin. I am the principal at Oakwood Elementary, and I'm excited this year to find out new things that we can learn together. See you soon.
Hey Panthers, the teachers are inside getting ready for you and these folks are outside getting the playground ready for you. We can't wait to see you soon.
Hi, I'm Alana Walsh and I'm the Wayzetta Transition Supervisor. I'm here to say I'm jumping for joy to start this school year.
Hi, East Middle School students and families. Ms. Bennett here, principal at East Middle School. We are so excited for the start of the school year. See you soon.
Hello, Wayzetta. This is Ashley Farnington and I'm the principal at Burtfield Elementary. And there's a lot of exciting things happening at Burtfield this summer. We have 100 new kids in grades one through five. We have 90 kindergartners, which is our biggest class of kindergarten in such a long time. And we have 13 new staff members. And this year, we're really going to focus on that theme of ADU matter so that every so that every new person and every returning person can know how much they matter at our school. See you soon.
What's new at Meadow Ridge this year?
I am.
And it's going to be the best year ever because we are 10 years old!
And now you can see why I saved that for last. Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you and if you have any questions, my team or I will do our best to answer.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, for that presentation. I just have a quick comment first before I move around with the colleagues for questions. So you mentioned cruising altitude, airborne, are you thinking of becoming Captain Anderson in your next career?
Well, yeah, I suppose it is a little bit like being a pilot, although I've
Yes, but you, you have piloted the district well though in the 18 years. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good colleagues, any questions, comments? Yeah, Heidi.
Well, welcome back to 2526, it's been a great start in my house. And I have a quick question on teaching and learning. So there was a, one of the focus areas is around fidelity checks for interventions. And I'm wondering what that, if you can tell me a little bit more about what that means. And I'm guessing that aligns with PLC work, maybe?
Yeah, correct. So our coaches and our teaching and learning literacy team, Julie and Ann, we look at that data and then we also are in the classrooms with our coaches and just taking a look to see, are we following, doing spot checks on how that instruction is going in those spaces comparative to our data performance, so.
Just a follow-up, so is that, it's a, it's an increased look at, so you're doing
No, we've always been doing fidelity checks are part of the
Focus, it's a focus on it, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I have one quick question for you, a clarification, Dr. Anderson. Maybe Director Lutz can answer this, but I noticed that you had a slide where it said you are 95% staffed. Is that typical of our district? Or if we have, let's say we had 100% staff, but how would that affect the class sizes? Did it make any dent or, I'm just trying to understand.
That specific data point was for transportation?
Oh.
So it was, yeah, we have 95% of our buses with a full-time assigned bus driver and the other 5% are filled with substitutes or individuals that it's identified were actually brought to Minnesota from California to help fill that void a little bit.
That's why you're
Yeah, every classroom
Had me nervous. I was nervous with that question.
Okay, sorry, I'm
I hope not.
Every classroom has a teacher and
My bad, sorry.
It helps in the, in the building as well.
So, but we are, we are usually 100% staffed, right?
We're 100% there, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, that's all, that's the question, only question I had. Anyone else? Okay, no.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next we have the audience opportunity to address the board. Amy, do we have anyone, nobody has shown an interest in speaking this, this evening? So we'll move on to the next item, which is administrative reports and recommendation. Again, Dr. Anderson, you will be presenting three policies for approvals.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, before you, there are three policies that are included. And I'll read the narrative outlining these policies as you're aware. And for the benefit of others in the audience, there's a policy committee that meets monthly, includes three school board members who review policies and make edits and modifications, recommendations for changes. And these policies and regulations were reviewed as part of their regular review cycle using the Minnesota School Board Association. Model policy were available or applicable by district administration and other district stakeholders were necessary. The final review was completed by the policy committee of the school board. And there are three policies tonight. Policy number 503, compulsory attendance. 602, acceleration, retention and enrichment program designed for students. And 609, commercial media use. And the recommended action is listed for you to read for your colleagues.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So colleagues, the recommended action is to approve the policies as presented, is there a motion?
I move.
Do you wave the second reading?
And I wave the second reading.
Thank you, Sheila, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there a discussion?
I'm, I mean, I don't know, Valentina or Paris, did you, I wanted to just say that there wasn't a whole lot of changes for these policies. They were mainly just terminology, I believe. So I, I'm going to be voting to approve them, I didn't know if anybody else wanted to comment or, okay.
All right, okay, thank you so much. So again, the recommended action is to approve the policies as presented, this is a roll call vote.
Valentina Ayers?
Yes.
Dan Janestra?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Paris Bendey?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor, yes. Heidi Cader?
Yes.
Millen Sione?
Yes, the motion passes, I want to thank the policy committee for all your efforts. Okay, so most of you know that this year there is an election for the Wayzetta School Board on November 4th. District election clerk, Amy Geis, will recommend a resolution for the appointment of an absentee ballot board. Amy?
Good evening Superintendent and School Board Directors. As Dr. Sione mentioned, there is a November 4th election. Absentee voting does start on September 19th for our listening audience that we held at the district service center at 13305 12th Avenue North. Both myself and our three absentee judges will be there, ready for you to vote. So feel free to vote early or on November 4th. The first item before you for elections, the school boards required to officially appoint the qualified absentee ballot board judges for the school board general election. They are listed in the resolution that follows and the recommended action is before you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. So the recommended action is to adopt as presented the resolution appointing absentee ballot board election judges for the general election on November 4th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
I so moved and asked that we wave the reading of the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? I do have a question, Amy. This is because I, 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 usually during an election, I try to get my absentee ballot from the Secretary of State, mail it to me, and then I mail it back. I found out that that cannot be done in this case, right? Is that, is that true?
That is not true.
But it said I have to go and pick it up from the city office.
You are able to now still receive your ballot via mail. You can go online and request that, it can be mailed to you and you will mail it back to the county and the county will collect those
Okay.
on our behalf and the directions are there. You can also have it mailed to you and come in and return it.
Okay.
And we'll spoil that ballot and give you a new one.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you for that clarification. Okay, again, so the recommended action is to adopt as presented the resolution appointing absentee board ballot, absentee ballot board election judges for the general election on November 4th, 2025. This is again a roll call vote.
Dan Janestra?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Paris Bendey?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor, yes. Heidi Cader?
Yes.
Valentina Ayers?
Yes.
Millen Sione?
Yes, the motion passes, thank you. Next, Amy will now recommend a resolution for the hourly pay rate for election judges.
Yes, this is not a resolution, just a
Recommend.
Vote. The hourly pay rate is before you for election judges. We, since I'm the only qualified election judge in our district, we do employ absentee ballot, election judges to help out within, in the office. We also employ judges for election day. So we do pay a slightly higher rate than the city of Plymouth because we do horrible elections in odd years and it is challenging to recruit during that time. But we have three stellar absentee judges that have worked for us in the past that have agreed to come back on. But those rates are before you.
Thank you, Amy. So the recommended action is to approve the 2025 hourly rate for election judges. Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
There's a second, second, you second that? All right, is there a discussion? Hearing none, this is again
I, well, I would like to just ask a question because it says head judges $20 per hour, technical judges 18 per hour and judges 15 per hour. Where are those amounts? I mean, like, how do you decide those amounts, is it just standard?
The amounts that are offered are in line with 2023, we did not raise the rates. And we had raised them from the 2021 election, I believe a dollar for, at the 2023. But these are the same rates that we offered in 2023. It's about a $1.50 more than they're offered from the city of Plymouth.
And this is, you know, if, once we start having even year elections, we will no longer have to
We will pay zero.
Pay zero for the judges, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
For the judges.
For the judges.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, again, again, the recommended action is to approve the 2025 hourly rate for election judges. This is also a roll call vote.
Paris Bendey?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor, yes. Heidi Cader?
Yes.
Valentina Ayers?
Yes.
Dan Janestra?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Millen Sione?
Yes, the motion passes, thank you, Sheila. All right, there is no teaching and learning report this evening. And now we have the finance reports, executive director of Finance and Operations, Trevor Peterson, will present the combined financial report for the month ending July 31, 2024. Trevor?
Yes, Chairperson Sione, Dr. Anderson, members of the board, good evening. In your packet, you will find the combined financial reports for the month of July 2025. As you might expect, with July being the first month of the fiscal year, it's kind of a boring report. So we'll zip through it pretty quickly. But the first statement includes a statement of revenues. You can see that there's, there's only one line item on there and that would be the miscellaneous local revenue within the general fund, which represents one thing, represents the interest earnings that we received on our cash balance for the month of July, and that was the only revenue included. And as you can see from the comparison to fiscal years, that is similar to what we have seen in the prior two years. In the other funds, similarly, the food service fund and debt service fund, that does include the interest earnings on the cash balance. The construction fund is the interest that was earned on our abatement bonds that we currently have held with a fiscal agent. And then community service fund did have a fair amount of revenue just because their programming continues throughout the year and throughout the summer. Moving on to the statement of expenditures, salaries and benefits continue to be the, the number one expenditure of the school district. You might say that, why isn't it 1/12? A lot of our staff, including the majority of those who are in the room today, do not get paid in July or August. So you will see that the, the majority of our staff that do not get paid then lowers that percentage as the year-to-date expenditures for July and August. Otherwise, everything else appears to be quite in line with what we have seen in previous years. Some of the outliers, especially in the capital expenditures, you'll see two years ago, we had 28% of our budget spent already after the first month. That's really a timing thing of based on when certain projects are done. We did have a significant project or a couple of significant projects that year that happened to be finished in July. So that's when the payments were made, so that's just a, a timing thing for some of those. Otherwise, all of that is certainly in line with what we would expect at this time of the year. The final then is looking at our cash balances. We do have about $60 million in our general fund investments. And then we have about $2.3 million that's held for those abatements bond that I referred to earlier. So in total, about $62 million. We are paying attention, we do expect the yield rates or the interest rates to be dropping a little bit. It's kind of been the noise the last few months, it, it hasn't yet. But we are monitoring that as, if that can, if that does drop as we expect it could, we'll continue to monitor our budget as we do have interest earnings as a pretty significant revenue source for the district. So with that, again, the, the recommended action is before you. And I, we did have an opportunity to look at this as a finance committee of the board last month or last week in a little greater detail. Otherwise, I would certainly ask for the recommendation as put forth in the packet.
Thank you, Trevor, is there recommended action? I don't know if
No, these are just routine in nature, no recommended action.
I scratched that then.
Oh, very.
No action, it's just routine in nature.
Yes. Thank you, any, any questions, comments?
I'll just say thanks to our finance team and it's, it's just fun to have you here. And Trevor, welcome on board, I think that was your first full one that you gave, the report that you gave to us?
Yeah, and I messed up on it.
Well, no, my gosh, but you're talking historical, you know, we're only going up, so thank you so much.
Anyone else? Valentina?
Yeah.
I think that maybe you discussed it financial committee, but since I'm not there, I'm curious why there is a difference between expenditures and revenues, I mean, over 8 million?
Yeah, that's just the timing of how the state meters all of the revenue that comes forward to the district. So typically what you'll see is not a lot comes in the month of July for state aids. Just because we're going through the process of cleaning up what our final enrollment was from '24, '25. And then once that gets finalized, then you see that catch up a little bit. But this is, it's very typical, it's just how everything is metered in, in state aids. Federal resources, sometimes, especially back within the COVID years, there, we did have ESAR funds. So if we had expenditures that were from ESAR, we'd have to draw those at a certain time. With that being done, we don't have as much federal revenue anymore, so you might not see that for a few months either. But again, that's just the metering of, of when the state makes their state aid payments to districts.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all right, if there are no other questions, thank you, Trevor. Okay, I don't think there are any human resources services report today, no other board action. And for board reports, I did not get any requests to have board reports, anybody want to say anything now? So no board reports either? All right, we are zipping through, the next boardwork session is on Monday, September 22nd at 5:00 PM. Please note the change in the start time, it's not at 4 o'clock, it's at 5:00 PM and it's going to be the case also in October. Thank you, Amy, for reminding me of that. All right, so this concludes the Wayzetta Public Schools' regular board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The time is now 8:15. The Wayzetta Public Schools' Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, September 8, 2025 is adjourned.